It is now seven P M. Welcome to the Tuesday, September fifteenth, Town Council meeting. Our meeting this evening, we broadcast live on the Town of Double Oak YouTube channel. Once on the channel, please click on the live button. Tonight, we have two of our council members who are joining via Skype, Teams, Zooms, whatever. And so bear with us as we work through it, but this is something that other towns do. And when we can accommodate and we can have the commitment from our council members to attend from afar, we think that's awesome. And so Janet and Pat, thank you for, hopefully, we won't have any technical snafus, but thank you tonight. Out of respect for all those in attendance, please refrain from talking to other members of the audience during the meeting. Silence all electronic devices while in the Cook-Wilkinson Community Government Room. I want to ask our Town Secretary Lynn Jones to please call the roll.
Mayor Johnson?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Wellen.
Pat?
Deputy Mayor Pro Tem Dietrich?
We can't hear Lynn, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we can't hear Lynn at all.
Okay, keep going.
Deputy Mayor Pro Tem Dietrich?
Here.
Mr. Gwartney?
Here.
Dr. K?
Here.
Ms. Robertson?
Janet?
Mayor, if you don't mind, since we have a quorum without me, it's two o'clock in the morning here, I think I'm going to excuse myself.
That's fine.
I apologize.
No problem.
But thank you to the town. I just realized that we have a very robust agenda and I probably won't make it live till four A M.
All right, no problem. You go get some rest, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
All right. But we do have a quorum, correct? All right. Deputy Mayor Pro Tem Dietrich will now lead us into vacation.
Heavenly Creator, we are grateful for the opportunity to serve the citizens of our town. As we begin this meeting, we pray for strength and clarity and of purpose. We ask for your blessings upon our town volunteers who freely give their time and talents to build a stronger community. Inspire us to be their steadfast allies, offering encouragement and practical support. We also pray for our police and fire departments who face challenges daily with unwavering dedication. Protect them in their duties and grant us insight to understand their needs and the resolve to championship their cause. May our decisions today lead to actions that uplift and protect every member of our community. Amen.
Thank you. Councilperson Gwartney will now lead us into pledges, please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation and a God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag, equality and dignity, Texas, one state, under God, and one individual.
Before we start this evening, I'd like to just go over a few ground rules to ensure the meeting is efficient and concise. Each council member and citizen will have a minimum of three minutes for their comments, questions, and answers. When recognized to speak, council members will proceed in an orderly fashion with one question per member before moving on to the next. The total time allotted for any Q and A session or agenda item will be kept at fifteen minutes, except for the public hearing that we have this evening for item, I believe it is thirteen. So first up, right out of the gate, is citizen comments, non-agenda subjects, item two. The council, the Town Council welcomes and values citizen input. A portion of each meeting is set aside for comments on non-agenda items, which means topics not listed on the meeting agenda. If your comments relate to an agenda item, you'll have the opportunity to speak when that item comes up. When recognized by the presiding officer, please step to the lectern and state your name and address for the record. Each citizen has up to three minutes to speak. Council members will listen closely but will not respond or enter into discussion during this time. This is a procedural rule designed to allow everyone a fair chance to be heard and to keep the meeting moving forward. Please also know that all meetings, including citizen comments, are recorded as part of the town's official record. We ask that all comments be respectfully and orderly. Personal attacks, profanity, disruptive behavior are not allowed. If rules of conduct are violated, the presiding officer may call the speaker to order, issue a warning, or require the individual to leave. I don't see that happening as well as anything with our law enforcement, so, but we do need to, in today's world environment, we've got to make some of these statements. These guidelines are in place to ensure that every citizen has opportunity to speak in a fair and respectful environment and that the Town Council meetings remain productive and professional. This evening, we have five individuals that are signed up for non-agenda items. First up tonight is Brian Burns, if you please come up.
Brian Burns, one twenty-five Willow Oak Court, here to provide my report. The good, the bad, the incompatible, running tally, and a new summary. The good, the planning zoning applications were added to the Town Council agenda for review and vote as previously requested. Now unfortunately, the bad, there's quite a few items. I've started to add item numbers, so this will be B one. Mayor Johnson and Mr. Berman, the town has accepted and published the application of Ms. Laura Mellinger for the Board of Adjustment despite ordinance one dot one three zero two explicitly prohibiting paid town employees from serving on commissions. She has served on the Planning and Zoning Commission in violation of the ordinance. Mayor Johnson and Mr. Berman were notified of this by multiple citizens, one during the planning and zoning meeting and another in writing, yet no corrective action was taken. I emailed both of them directly, bringing this conflict to their attention and requesting an official ruling on her eligibility. That request was ignored. Her continued service, or her service on the P and Z Committee already created a possible ethics concern, and if she is allowed to serve on the B O A, it will further create an ethical conflict that should be reported to the Texas Ethics Commission. While the Board of Adjustment Ordinance one dot one two zero zero does not explicitly restate the prohibition found in one one three oh two, Texas law and conflict of interest principles treat a paid town employee serving on the Board of Adjustments as incompatible. The Board exercises quasi judicial authority, appeals invariances, that requires independence from town staff. Allowing a paid employee to serve risks undermining impartiality and creates a clear conflict of interest. And now with tonight's agenda, we see that we may also have potential nepotism concerns with Dirk's application if she's serving as a paid employee and her husband's on a committee. Item B two, Mayor Johnson, possible selective ordinance violation, refusing to enforce the procedural rules ordinance allowing council members to violate decorum while calling out citizens and continuing to block any discussion of a decorum resolution from being added to the agenda. Item B three, our Town Administrator Chris, possible selective ordinance enforcement. He informed Mr. Frisbee only that defense was too high while failing to address that it was also far too close to the road, which is a separate ordinance violation. He did not make them aware of that. Item B four, Town Administrator Chris, a possible TOMA violation, failed to respond within ten days to a Public Information Act request regarding the replat application and did not notify me of any delay and ultimately delivered the response six days late. Item B five, the town itself, we have a possible TOMA violation. After repeated requests for information, there's been no documented process or procedure that appears to exist for identifying and archiving personal emails that are used to conduct official town business. After multiple requests to have this added as an agenda item, those have also been denied. In complete items, well, we have item I one, fence at two fifty Simmons Road, this will continue to be on the report as long as it's continued to be ignored by Mayor Johnson and the council for discussion.
Thank you. Thank you. Chris Bump?
Guys, my name's Chris Bump, I live at six zero one four Plantation Lane. I think the gentleman before me just kind of stole some of my thunder, but prior to what was going on last month, I was indifferent. I was not involved, I didn't care. And what took place with the helipad and the withdrawal of application, the readmission of application, and somebody saying, you know, that it had not been notified, and the racker or the ranker that followed caused me to start looking, caused me to get involved. So in that vein, I would say thank you, because I'm now deeply involved in what's going on and watching, and so I wanted to bring to your attention some of the same, right? So during the P and Z, a gentleman brought up the issue and asked the question, is there someone on P and Z who's not qualified? And nobody answered. And apparently, there was a person on the P and Z who was not qualified to be there. And to me, this smells of just being untoured, even duplicity, because clearly, people knew, all right? I don't know, because when we were having the P and Z, a gentleman came forward and said that people were attacking you or attacking the applicant, I don't know anything about that. But, you know, when we see this letter that went out, that looked as though you, sir, were assisting someone who wasn't even a citizen yet in their letter to the community, that kind of said to me that you already had a bias in the matter. And as the mayor, we hope, as the Town Council, we hope that there's neutrality there, it didn't look it. And so consequently, again, I'm starting to think, wow, what is going on here? And exactly as he said, so as I start to investigate, I see that in fact, I guess Ms. Mellinger's husband is now applying for P and Z while she moves to another committee. And the question you have to ask is why? Right, why are we doing this? Are there nobody else in Double Oak who could serve on these committees? It just, it stinks of nepotism, it stinks of duplicity. And the last meeting I watched, sir, on YouTube, you brought up the issue about the state trying to pass, you know, regulations that allow them to largely take over our town business. And I'm fully aligned with you in not wanting to do that. But the question you got to ask yourself is, you know, when we're doing things like this, that are very obviously not above board, you know, is there any reason to doubt the state thinks they can do better than us? So I just, the thing going through my mind is, guys, we're just, we're not putting our best foot forward. You are not showing yourselves to be good stewards of our town, because what looks like duplicity, whether it is or not, that's what it looks like, and it shouldn't. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeanne Sims, or Jeanne Sims, did I say it right?
You said, anyway, you can call me Jeanne, where they get comfortable, Jeanne, don't have a middle name.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Jeanne Sims, I'm at two seventy Oak Trail Drive, I've lived in Double Oak for almost thirty-five years. I'm a thirty-plus-year licensed insurance professional, having served as a deputy commissioner of insurance. I'm here to strongly recommend that we really look at ordinances as a way to reduce liability and risk. And so I'm going to just take the example of the helipad. This proposal, while we are not addressing this, we don't have an ordinance against it. The proposal is not just a zoning issue, it's a public safety, legal liability, and insurance risk of the highest order. Our ordinances are silent on the issue of residential helipad and drones of a certain size, allowing one resident, will set a dangerous precedent, and once approved, the town will have a little legal basis to deny similar requests in the future. The helicopter was under consideration, approved for site landings, meaning landings are made by visual reference only without instrument guidance. In a community with homes, water tower, livestock, power lines, trees, children playing, this creates significant hazards. Site landings have no fixed FAA-protected approach path, every arrival and departure will be different, increasing risk and unpredictability. Poor weather, night operations, dust, smoke can make landing attempt far more dangerous. The same goes for any other type of landings in Double Oak. The public risk is serious. A single crash could impact on dozens, even hundreds of homes. Imagine a catastrophic accident where debris, fire, or explosions damage a hundred homes and cause injuries and deaths. Every one of those affected homeowners would sue, not only the helicopter owner, but also the town of Double Oak and its citizens. For approving and enabling a hazardous activity in a residential area, the legal exposure for the town would be massive. Insurance won't shield you from these consequences. Standard homeowner's insurance excludes aircraft liability. The property owner would require costly specialized aviation liability coverage, and the town's municipal liability may not cover aviation accidents without a special, without expensive special endorsements. If coverage exists, premiums could skyrocket and be canceled after a single incident. Having an ordinance against these kinds of issues like helipads places an unacceptable burden on the community's safety, finances, legal stability. And that's why I've actually made application to be part of the ordinance committee. And once you approve something, once you approve something or don't address it, if you do approve it, you can unring this bell, so I just want to point out the risks and liabilities the town faces with respect to ordinances which are supposed to protect us as a town.
Thank you.
Mary Johnson, one sixty-fourth Park Lane, Double Oak, Texas. Just here, just more of an announcement about the Double Oaks Women's Club. We know that there's, the double is full of amazing talented women just waiting to be invited to connect, create, and contribute to our great community through service and support. Please join us tomorrow evening, September sixteenth, at seven P M. right here in the Town Hall. We're a vibrant group of women of all ages, and we offer a balance between many women-focused gatherings and events. We have family-friendly and children programming, such as the Breakfast with Santa, the Easter Egg Hunt and Pancakes. We have adult social gatherings with spouses included, such as Derby Day and maybe even a Double Oak Open. But most importantly, we offer purposeful charitable projects that support the entire town, such as the annual auction fundraiser for the Double Oak Fire Department and local charities, the casino night to raise funds for college scholarships. So the Double Oak Women's Club is a perfect way to recharge, make friends, and find purpose. We ask you to find a neighbor, ride together, and join us tomorrow evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeanne Hillier, one seventy Trailing Oaks Drive. This is not specific to the budget, but goes back to a question I asked earlier this year on the fund balance. I said, it was presented at, after the audit, annual audit was presented to the Town Council and accepted, had a follow-on meeting of the Town Council. I asked when the Town Council would be allocating unused balances from the 2023, 2024, and the 2024, 2025 budgets to the balance sheet. At that time, the mayor responded that there was an outstanding item from the past of a hundred thousand dollar payment to Flower Mound that needed to be resolved before allocations we made by the Town Council to the balance sheet. It's been several months. When might the citizens of Double Oak expect both of these issues to be resolved? For the enlightenment of those present or viewing from a distance, the most recent update was Resolution twenty-three dash zero one, Resolution of the Town Council, Town of Double Oak, Town Council establishing the fund balance policies as required by Gatsby fifty-four. So this isn't something nice, it's necessary. Our Town Administrator mentioned in a recent meeting that our town's finances were healthy. As a refresher, Resolution twenty-three oh one, twenty-three dash ten, note, oh one, notes that, in quotes, "That the Town of Double Oak's financial goal is to have a sufficient balance in the general fund with sufficient working capital and a margin of safety to address local and regional emergencies without borrowing. The town shall strive to maintain a yearly assigned and unassigned fund balance, fund balance, and a general fund of fifty-five to seventy-five percent of the total operating expenditures." It's my understanding that we presently exceed that, but the question is, by how much, and is that really valid, since we haven't seen a balance sheet? This Resolution is adopted on February sixth, twenty twenty-three. We'd appreciate an answer. Thank you.
Okay, moving on, council, item three, consent agenda. All consent agenda items listed are considered to be routine by the Town Council, will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda, considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Information concerning consent agenda items is available for public review. Tonight, council, we have one item, discuss, consider, and act on the minutes of September second meeting, twenty twenty-five. Are there any corrections to the minutes or questions about the item?
No.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
I second.
We have a motion by Councilperson Gwartney and a second by Deputy Mayor Pro Tem Dietrich. Lynn, can you please call the vote?
Ms. Wellen?
Aye.
Dr. K?
Aye.
Mr. Gwartney?
Aye.
Mr. Dietrich?
Aye.
All right, consent agenda passes, thank you. All right, moving on to the next item is mayor council members and staff reports. So Pat, since you're away, away, do you have anything this evening you'd like to share?
Yes, I'm just going to ask Chris if he can give an update on the information about looking into the committees having email addresses through the town, the cost of that, and all of his and update.
Yeah, I'd be happy to. I spoke with our I T consultant about the cost of getting all of our, to getting email addresses to the members of the P and Z and the Board of Adjustments. The cost for doing that per email address is a hundred and fifty-nine dollars a year per user, so adding up all the number of people on those two committees, it'd be an expenditure of about three thousand dollars a year if we provided a city email address to each of our commissioners. I did send out an email to them all, just kind of sharing what the issue was. Most of them were fine with just using their own, their own personal email addresses. A few of them have changed it and added a second email address so it wouldn't tie into their existing one. So given the fact that most of our board members are willing to utilize their own email address, I recommend saving three thousand dollars and going that way. One of the issues that is brought up is what happens if we get an open records request for, for these people's personal email addresses. The way that would work is, they would only have to turn, they wouldn't have to turn over their whole phone. They would be required, though, to turn over any requested information on that particular email address, if that makes sense. So it wouldn't be like if you keep your own email address and we get an open records request, that they would have to hand me their phone and I can look at every single email. No, that's not how it works. It would be only, it'd be up to them to provide me with whatever, whatever was requested as part of that open records request.
So we'll, I'll talk to Chris about this, and then we'll see if it needs to come back to an agenda item for a little bit further discussion. Since Pat brought it up here, I wanted to make sure that we addressed it. Anything else, Pat?
No, that's all.
Okay. Dr. K?
Nothing to report.
All right.
Well, I guess I can ask Chris, how, well, it's Rhodes, I'll wait till Rhodes, how about that?
Mike?
Yeah, I am not sure really how to address this, but I'm going to just go at it the best I can. Tired of the situation of keeping score about what we're doing and what we're not doing as a council. I think it pits us against the council, and I think the same kind of situation that happened with Charlie Kirk pitting him against other people caused what happened to him this past week or so. And I think that it's not an issue of us against them as much as it is an issue of just having a civil conversation amongst council members and citizens. And I don't think we have that anymore. And I don't think we have that because it's gotten a little bit emotional about the issues relating to P and Z and relating to the helicopter and all of that. And council had issues with what they should say and what they shouldn't say, and orders from, not orders necessarily, but direction from the attorney. And I just think that we need to stop the rhetoric and just be nice to each other and be civil, but stop keeping score. Keeping score means it's us against them.
Thank you. Mark?
Don't have anything to add, thank you.
Okay. I've just got a few things. So I think National Night Out. So I think National Night Out coming up on October 7th. I know you're going to talk about that, but I'm going to keep reminding everybody of that. We've got the hazardous waste event, which will be coming on Saturday, November 8th. That's in the Town Hall parking lot. That's, we just got our, some information on Friday from Republic Waste. I think they've already posted some of the information on the website, and then I'll be putting it into the Friday update moving forward until we have the event, just to make sure that we remind everybody. As far as correspondences and such, I've been receiving significant, a number of those. Some of them are direct, directly at, at myself. Some of them are directed towards town business. I'm addressing those as needed and, and based upon the rhetoric that Mike was discussing and the fact that many of our postings and, and some of our responses from emails seem to find their way onto social media. We're unfortunately to the point where we've got to clear everything through our town attorney. You would like to think that, that you could respond to the citizens in a manner that you would foster that good conversation, but instead it ends up in social media. And social media is the devil, as we all know, and so it makes it real difficult to communicate. So I like your comments, Mike, if we want to start to have some good conversation. I'm available, come to the Town Hall and meet anytime that, that citizens would like to, but no one has reached out and asked me to do that. So I look forward to my schedule filling up over the next few weeks for those who want to come in and just sit in and have that good civil conversation, talk about these things. But putting it all into social media is really not the way to do it, and therefore it gets the, the responses and the non-responses that you get from a legality perspective. So anyway, that's, that's it for me. Public Works Code Enforcement.
I just a few highlights as it relates to code enforcement. This week, we sent out five letters to various residents as it relates to code violations. It's just something I'm going to be sharing with council each meeting, just so you get an idea of the, of the workload in that area. As it relates to open records requests, again, I'm going to be giving updates on that each meeting. I received three, since the last council meeting, I have received three more open records requests, which has taken up about five to six hours of staff time and a few hundred dollars more on the attorneys and running totals since June. It's, we've had almost 30 hours of staff time of replying to open records requests, and we've had over 15 of them. So just to give you an idea of just things that are happening behind the scenes.
And what's the attorney cost?
What's that?
What's the attorney cost?
Total attorney cost as of right now is $1,265, and some of those are estimates because I haven't got the complete bill yet, so I update that as I get the bill. So, so also, we are busy filling potholes. I know there was a huge one on King's. I drove by there today. It's, looks like it's sunk down a little bit more, so we gotta, we gotta get more filler into that. But we were aware that, the big one. Also, just wanted to share that in this building here, we had a, one of our rain gutters, when it rained, when it rained really hard, one of the reasons that door over there is as bad as it is because the rain gutter was going the wrong way. And so instead of the water going down the spit, down the pipe, it was going right in front of that door, which has caused damage to the door. We have now fixed that rain gutter, and it's leading the right way. So hopefully, just those little things like that, I'll just be sharing too with things that are going on. Finally, a while back, council had approved getting a new electricity outlet out at the park by the bench and the tree over there to help with special events. That has been done, so now when we do have special events or other events at the park, there'll be additional power plugs out there. So those are just a few of the things that have been happening as it relates to public works and code enforcement. Would like to move right on to administration. We are moving hot and heavy on our conversion to our Tyler Financial System. We're now working on our new chart of accounts, which is a, is a major thing. That combined with the conversion of the data, but now we're setting up how all the, the nomenclature of all the accounts. And it's really important to do that correctly because then it'll allow us to provide council and the community very well thought-out reports on, on an easy basis. So we are still on track. We are hoping to have the whole project completed by the end of the year. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. Public Safety. Chief Grau, you want to come up? This will be your portion to talk about the report and all that, and then we'll talk about the other item.
Good evening. My name is Kirk Grau. I'm a talent chief with Double Oak. Chief, I guarantee Bowen couldn't make it tonight, so they asked me to step in one. Real quick, just wanted to go to the department activities through August of 2025. Total calls, 148 calls. Fire calls, 51, which is 30% of our volume. Medical calls are at 97, which is 66% of our calls, or volume, excuse me. Training hours were at 1,827, and volunteer hours were at about 4,000. Some monthly team achievements, Lexi Goodwin earned her EMT, which is a good established deal. Three members, Lexi Goodwin, Ben McLean, and Lieutenant Athol were actually down in Curville for two weeks, the past two weeks. They got back yesterday helping Task Force One. So that's, that was through TIFMS and through Texas Department of TDM, basically. And then also, we wanted to thank the Double Oak Women's Club for having us, or serving us dinner one night. I couldn't attend, but we appreciate that. So in regards to the project that we discussed, so what we're trying to do as a department, we're trying to get rid of all of our small engines. So that might, has to do with the engine on top of the apparatuses. It might have to do with the, our lighting systems that are the small Honda generators. We're trying to get rid of all that stuff because they're problematic. They have issues all the time. They don't start, and when we need it, they're not starting. So we're trying to move to portable lighting systems, and we're also trying to move from halogen to LED lighting, obviously, because they're more efficient. So we have one proposal here that we're going to basically take four, four of our scene lights off our engines and convert those into portable tripod lighting. So they'll be mounted just like our regular scene lighting, but say, for instance, we have something down in a barge ditch off in the woods. These lights can be taken off, moved on scene, so you have light where you need it. Or if there's a structure fire, we can move these lights around. So those are just some of the things we're doing. Now, there's a lot of other portable lighting too that we're going to put on some of the other rescue vehicles. So those replace the small Honda generators that have the big flip-up halogens. These are just small, compact, and they use a Milwaukee or a DeWalt battery, again, for portable lighting. And that eliminates all the problems we have with bringing all those small engines in for service for just, just problems in general. The total on the whole project is $33,570. And that would be for, one sea light for the chief's truck. That'd be four for the small portable lighting, and then four for the tripods, and eight obviously batteries and chargers for those actual products. Just to give you guys an idea, we're looking at new tires now because due to NFPA guidelines, we have to have new tires every seven years. New tires for our, just for our engines is $10,000. So it's a huge expense. And then on top of that, we just found out through Denton County, we lost $10,000 in funding from them because we're not serving any unincorporated, unincorporated areas. And that's every department that's not serving us. A lot of departments lost that extra $10,000 in funding. So we just found out about that yesterday. So a lot of things going on, and some good, some bad with regards to budget. So any questions or comments or anything?
Yeah, I asked, I had a conversation with chief last week, and last year during the budgeting process, we talked about increasing the budget, not increasing the budget that we pay each year for the Double Oak Volunteer Fire Department. We had discussed that, well, what if we just did a one-off project that we basically could utilize money from the fund balance in order to pay for this to assist with our Double Oak Volunteer Fire Department? We never got to any of that happening last year. And so when I talked to the chief last week, I said, hey, listen, we didn't accomplish that last year. What can you bring to the table that I think the council would be interested to learn about as it relates to a project that could help improve the fire department? And we do it, instead of throwing it into the budget, but we do it in a manner that it's tied to a project. So tonight isn't about a debate yet on this. We'll have this as a debate, discussion, consideration, and action at a future meeting. But since we are working on the budget tonight, I wanted it to be brought up ahead of time. So when it does come to that time, we can have the good debate that we need in order to assist the Double Oak Volunteer Fire Department, because it is tough. I mean, their costs are going up exponentially.
Sure.
And we have the, we have the, the best of both worlds here with our fire department and our EMS, and the coverage we have in this town for what we pay is unbelievable. If we were to do this in a different way, this town would be looking at upwards of two to two and a half million dollars for fire and EMS services. So we have a really good gig, and we've got a great volunteer fire department that knows their stuff. It's fun to see people come in, and then they end up in jobs in other departments. I talked to Chief Vaughn, and he was talking about the, one of our, that joined over in ESD 1. So very prideful of that. So tonight is really about introducing to the council this opportunity that we can assist the Double Oak Volunteer Fire Department sooner than later, correct? And have it be brought up before a budget is approved. So if, you can ask chief all, any questions you want, but we will get into the nuts and bolts of this once it becomes an agenda item.
I just want to say, I appreciate it because last year we were discussing this, and nothing has come up for a year. So this is really nice to actually hear the numbers and see the impact that the volunteer fire department is having, and it's concerning for sure, you know? So hopefully, I'm excited for that agenda item in the future to be able to discuss that. Thank you.
Are there any unincorporated areas close to Double Oak that y'all could serve?
No.
Okay. I didn't think there was.
It has to be within your district, so no, there's not.
Yeah.
So there's a lot of departments like us losing that funding.
Losing that same funding.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Yeah, was that like a vote, like, I don't know, in the Denton County? Who decided that? Some kind of?
We're actually meeting with someone next week regarding it to fully understand what, because again, we just found out about it, and a lot of people didn't know about it. So we're going to figure out what's exactly going on and everything else. So it's a surprise to a lot of departments. So.
Yeah, the Denton County from a fire perspective has some extreme challenges going on in the northern parts from the corner to corner as far as coverage, and so they're trying to figure out where they're going to spend their funds, where they're going to allot their funds, how they're going to set up their departments in order to cover all of that new development that's going out there. So I don't know if this is a byproduct of that, but we did have a presentation at a mayor's lunch from the Denton County Fire Marshal, and he talked about, unfortunately, there's not enough funds to spread out there for everybody.
Yep, and I think it was just reallocating those funds to those departments.
That is correct.
And when do you have tires done by?
What's that?
When do you have to have tires done by?
Um, there's not a set date. NFPA just required, it just suggests that you replace them every seven years, and obviously that leads on to liability issues and everything else. So that's their guidelines.
So, no, like I said, we, we were kind of doing this at 3:00 last year at Budget, the chief and I. And so we talked earlier and wanted to make sure that we get this on the radar screen. We get something in a target box that we can go and shoot for from a council perspective. So really appreciate you coming out here tonight and spending the time with us.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Chief?
Yeah, so we, last week, we interviewed two applicants for a police officer position. You know, when we do these interviews, we're not just making sure that the applicant is a good fit for DOPD, we're also making sure that DOPD is a good fit for the applicant. Both of the applicants did very well in interviews. They both expressed interest in moving on, so they've both been moved to backgrounds. And so we're very excited about both of them and hoping that the backgrounds work out okay. We lost our last good applicant on a hiccup in the background, but we'll be moving forward with them. We've made significant progress cleaning out the property and evidence room. This building doesn't have a lot of storage space, and so there were several dozen boxes of old paper reports and files in there, and that requires going through them one by one. You know, there were certain statutory retention requirements based on the type of report, the type of offense. So we've been spending a lot of time going through all those reports, purging the ones that we can, and then once we get those reduced down as much as possible, we'll be scanning and digitizing the rest of them so that storage becomes a non-issue. And in conjunction with that, we're able to remove some of the property and some of the evidence that's in the cage that was related to those reports. So that's really the first step in our accreditation journey. The accreditation advisors have told us that property and evidence is one of the most common places to get tripped up on accreditation, so we're really trying to make sure that's squared away before we really dive into this with both feet. As the mayor mentioned, plans are underway for National Night Out, so mark your calendar for Tuesday, October 7th, 5:30 to 7:30. We just put up a pretty cool little video on our social media pages about that.
Yeah, it was cool.
And we're hoping to get that on the website soon as well. And then some good news, we added a new member to the DOPD family, so congratulations to Officer Williams and his wife and their new daughter. Congratulations.
Do you have to do a background, do you have to do a background check on the daughter?
Absolutely.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, chief. Roads Committee?
Well, I just wanted to get an update from Chris on seeing if Marshall was able to kind of look and see how the crack and seal was done, and if there was any concerns. And then just as an update too, I didn't get any feedback on roads from anybody as far as citizens or otherwise, so, you know, potentially reallocating that.
Yeah, Marshall did go and check all, all the roads. He was very happy with the, with the results of what they did, so I'll be getting with you shortly, see if we can add a few more roads.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
So again, this is, this has to do with the crack seal. We ended up coming in under budget, and if we need to find a road or two to go ahead and, and add to the list, that's what we're looking for. So if you live on a road that, that is asphalt in nature, that you look and it goes, oh, wow, that asphalt looks like it's been there a while, and the crack seal's been there a while, give us a shout to the Town Hall. We're out there seeking it out as well, looking at the roads, but your input is welcome as well.
Yeah, along with the roads, thank them for the, the potholes getting them filled in, but they're not flush with the top of the road. They got about an inch left. They got to go back and top those off?
Yeah.
Okay.
Drainage?
Drainage apologizes for not having a meeting yet. I'm sorry, I've been just super busy, so I apologize, and it's my fault.
So we have, we are investigating right now that a culvert that we did three or four years ago in Meadow Knoll may be in peril of collapsing. So we're, it's not as simple as just sticking your head down in there and looking to see. So Marshall's out investigating that.
Okay.
So we might have an emergency repair there, and then I've got two that I would like to see move to the front of the table. These are cross culverts we're talking about. We've got a serious issue on, if you've ever driven, cross timber is just west of Cedar Crest in a, in a decent rain. It fills up over there pretty quick and runs across the road. That's a safety hazard, and then a couple of others. So as soon as you can get that meeting scheduled, let's, let's get down and get it hammered out.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. All right, we're going on to new business agenda. Item five, number 12, public hearing to receive citizens' comments regarding the proposed ad valorem tax rate of .178384 per $100 for the fiscal year 2025, 2026. Chris, before we open the public hearing, can you, you just want to speak to that briefly? Kind of means?
Sure. That, putting the budget together, this is making the assumption that we are keeping the tax rate the same as it is this year, and I would like to also apologize. We had put out a couple of things on the web where there was a little transposition of a couple numbers, so I just wanted to clarify that. It is 178384 instead of 834. So doesn't affect, our calculations for the budget and the backup are all correct, but there was a little confusion there, so I, so I apologize for that. But it's basically, it is keeping the rate the exact same, however, due to improvements made to people's homes and increased valuation, it would bring in an additional $57,000 to the town.
Council questions on that before we go to public hearing?
I was just wondering, I know we've, we've had some extra money, right? So how did that end up on the, on the total there? Where that, you know, that little extra, where, you know, had the extra money in there? If you took out that 57, then we would be in the red, basically. I can't remember what the number was, maybe like 40 something thousand, right? I can't remember what the number was, maybe like 40 something thousand, right?
Yeah, basically what happened during the budget process, and it's kind of hard because the tax rate and the budget kind of go hand in hand a little bit. A couple of meetings ago, we were still at a balance of, where we had a balance of, it was $28,000. The budget that you have approved for tonight includes, I had put that, I had distributed that $28,000 in there, and I'll share, we're kind of going into the budget mode right now, but again, they all kind of relate. For that $28,000, I put an additional $5,000 for attorney charges based upon the increased costs that are, given what's been going on, another $5,000 during the budget workshop. We talked briefly about budgeting for what are called employee cashouts and what that is, when we have an employee that leaves, the town has to pay out vacation, whatever vacation is on the books. So this just puts a dollar amount in there, so it doesn't impact our operational, operational budget, should we lose one or two people, depending on the, how long that they have been there. And the rest, the $18,000 I had put in drainage, just to help with the drainage. Getting back to your question now, yeah, the question was brought up, and instead of allocating that $28,000 into the budget like I recommended, what would happen if we just reduced our property tax to?
No new revenue, right?
Yeah, I did do that calculation, it would reduce our rate down to what's .173, I'm sorry, 1731906, and what I did is I, I did an average tax to say, okay, what does that mean to the average homeowner, how much would that save? It would reduce their property tax by roughly $38 a year, if we, if we reduced it and didn't budget for that additional $28,000. Is that, was that your question?
Yeah, pretty much, yeah. Wanted to see if, yeah, what the new, because I know we talked about that, changing it to the no new revenue rate, what would that would look like?
Well, if we went to the no new revenue rate, that would, that would eliminate, that would take our estimated amount down to 1290, which would, basically, we would have to reduce our budget by $57,000.
Correct. Pat, did you have questions?
No, that was my question as well, and Chris answered it.
Okay. So council, do you, you have a good understanding of the, the proposed rate versus the no new revenue rate?
I mean, with what the volunteer fire department came with today too, I don't see how we can reduce it to the no new revenue. It sounds like we got to at least stay even with last year to be able to accommodate.
Okay. All right, it is now 7:48. I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing. Okay, I've got 7:49. The public hearing is now closed. We'll move on to the next item, item 13, and we do have a citizen who signed up on this. Discuss, consider, and act on ordinance approving and adopting the budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2025, and ending September 30th, 2026. Jean Hillier?
Jean Hillier, 170 Trainon Oaks Drive. Appreciate you posting some revisions after the last meeting, and I've got some questions that maybe will come out in the discussion, and if I missed something earlier in this meeting, I apologize. I'm looking at the three-page document that was posted out, I don't know if you have that in front of you or not, but specifically, I'm kind of interested, I'm interested in the 210.7% increase in IT services, if there's any enlightenment that can be provided in terms of what that, that involves. I also see under capital that the technology fund has basically been zeroed out, so has that been moved somewhere else? Again, it would be interesting to know. This is what really befuddles me, having served on the roads and drainage committee when it was both. I see street repairs at $50,000 and drainage repairs at 58. According to what I've learned from longtime residents who've lived here 45 years or more, public safety, roads, and drainage are the three things that are most important to citizens of the town, and I'm not seeing where those numbers for roads and drainage even begin to touch like repairs, especially if there are things that have to go back and be redone. So like, where's that money coming from? And again, maybe it's sitting on the balance sheet and we just don't know, so it's, you know, it's hard to know really what's going on there. And then, the police department, I'm kind of wondering, on that one, IT services was zeroed out of that. Again, did that just get lumped into one big bucket somewhere? And the reason I'm asking is, is not that this makes any difference, but just for enlightenment for anybody who might be interested. When I was on council and could ask questions of our technology administrator, his intent was to distribute expenses by department so that people would understand that, for example, the police department was heavy for IT because it is a heavy IT user. I mean, it just, by virtue of all the contracts we have and all the software and all that kind of stuff, and to me, this, this really subtracts from that kind of transparency, and to me, it makes more sense to have it broken out by department, so I'd request that that be done in the final budget. Thank you.
Okay, so council, what questions do you have?
Related to the overall budget that we're talking about?
Yeah.
So we, we haven't had an evaluation of Chris's service here for the past year, is that coming up soon, and will that affect this budget or upcoming budget or this past year's budget?
No, it will, it will, it's countered, it is included in this upcoming budget.
Okay.
As a part of the increases to the town administration.
Okay.
As far as the review on our town administrator, that will take place in the 1st of November.
And is that, that's done by the council?
That's done by the council.
Okay, and is that done?
It'll be done in a closed session.
Done in a closed session, okay.
Yes. It would be the middle of October, but he's going to be gone.
He gets time off?
Yes.
So that will be the time that we will discuss his salary and where he is as far as anything?
His and others.
Yeah, yeah, okay, his and others.
Yeah, the, the review process will start once the new budget hits. Just because there have been allocated numbers, percentages, numbers for our town administration, our police department, reviews still have yet to be done, they begin after the budget gets approved, all right? We, three years, two years ago, we didn't even do reviews in this town. We started them two years ago, we improved them last year, and this year, it's even going to be more organized, so.
Okay.
Other questions on the budget? As it relates to Jean's questions, you want to talk about the IT?
Sure, with the IT, basically, the main reason for the increase in administration is because our big Datamax contract, which is a large contract, I recommend in moving that all into one account under administration, that way for those contracts that oversee the entire organization, I'm recommending putting those into admin, that's why you're seeing some of the big swings up and down percentage-wise. But again, I think it's, it's important to look at the budget as a whole and not get caught up into the individual line items, again, but the budget as a whole, we're looking at a change from last year of 3.8% which includes a 3.5% cost of living for, for employees, so there's not a, there's not a lot of extras in there, so when you combine that with the additional money that council has already approved for like the EMS contract, and the other large dollar amount that is in there is for the equipment replacement fund, per the council's direction, for our patrol vehicles, we'll be setting up an equipment replacement fund, so when police vehi, police patrol vehicles are ready to be purchased, that money is going to be there. It's not like, oh my gosh, where are we going to find the money to do this? It'll be set up on a regular rotating amount each year, and as they're deemed necessary and due to the replacement schedule, we'll bring it to council and won't have to worry about where the money's coming from. But outside of that, there was a little bit of ups and downs, just kind of cleaning up some line items, there were some line items that were, I'll put this very, very nicely, that they were just budgeted, pardon my, they were budgeted incorrectly, that I just had to fix. For example, the, the employee insurance for our fallen officers, it was, it wasn't clear in the employee insurance line item that exactly what was there, so now it's nice and clear, it's nice and clean, and things like that just, just need to be cleaned up. So there are some, well, big, big increases here, decreases there from a percentage-wise basis, but again, as I mentioned to you guys at the very, very beginning of our budget workshop, the budget is a planning document, it is not a financial document. I take the priorities of council based upon what you say and assign numbers to them. As it relates to streets and drainage, as we have talked about at the workshop and other things, we will be addressing those through our fund balance, we do have a healthy fund balance. The monies that are identified in the operating budget will cover what I call minor street repairs or some simple drainage, but there is, there will, there will be adequate money in the, in the reserve fund, of which we'll be bringing a GASB 54 resolution to you in the near future to identify and highlight how much money you want to put out of the fund balance into those programs.
And, and just to reiterate previous concern of a citizen, we still will have the line item data of how much IT was spent for the police, for the admin, for Public Works, and so on and so on. So it's, it's accumulated into a line item, correct, called IT, but we'll still have the breakout of where the money is spent.
And on top of that, when we go to our new Tyler financial system, the way that we're set that up, that's why I mentioned right now, we're doing the chart of accounts, we're going to be setting it up, so I would be able to run a report for IT that basically all you hit, all you hit is the IT number, and it'll pull all the IT line items out of each of admin, of courts, of Public Works, of police, and it lets me generate just IT-generated expenditures. So you will have that types of flexibility, I will be presenting those reports once, once, once we are going with Tyler, I'm darn excited about it, but, so we will have that capability to know, so if you do have the need to know how much are we spending in a certain area, by setting up the chart of accounts and the time that we're taking now by meeting with the consultants to set it up properly, it's really going to help with reporting to both council and the residents in the future.
Council, other questions?
Can I make a comment?
Oh, yeah, go ahead, Pat.
I'm sorry, so I also wanted to make a comment on, I, y'all are about three-minute delay for me, so this is kind of weird. I wanted to make a comment that this is the first time I've also had a chart of contracts in a budget, and so we have a listing of all of our contracts and what they are and how much they are, and we've already gotten bids, so we know what the next year's contracts are, instead of getting them after we put a budget together. So I, just for the time I've been on council, this is one of the cleanest documents that we've had that I've seen, and we haven't had to sit around and guess at what we think revenue is. We've had it kind of lined out, and it has been, through the numbers, through previous numbers, we have actual real projections rather than council sitting there thinking, well, I think sales tax will be that, this, I think it'll be that. So I have the most confidence in this document than I've had in our previous ones. That's my comment that I wanted to make on this.
Thank you, Pat.
Budget.
Dr. K?
Well, just the same as Pat, you know, there's almost nothing to say because it's all been accounted for. Obviously, Chris's experience has shown what a budget can look like, you know, and he's obviously in the trenches, he knows what we're spending money on, and he's, you know, accounting for it all, so I think that it's, it's really good, I don't, I don't see any issues.
Okay, Mike?
Yeah, I mean, in general, I guess I would also say for Chris is that probably by pulling all the IT together, you found this $20,000 of contracts that we didn't need, whereas if it had been separated out, it may have been difficult to do that. And so, I mean, I just, again, appreciate Chris for finding these $20,000 and working on contracts that back early in his tenure here, he, he found $30,000, you know, and so he's, he's done his job better than I've ever seen it done, and I've only been in Double Oak five years, but we really appreciate it, so, yeah.
Thank you. Mark?
Yeah, I'd just echo what the others say, but it's interesting seeing a budget that's gone through and is the ability to look at the things individually because it's kind of getting straightened out, and instead of things thrown everywhere where you don't know what's going on, you put them all together and you go, oh, wait a second, now why is that there? Because I never noticed it here, there, and whatever, and now we got it all put together, and like the 20,000, I mean, those aren't insignificant numbers that are being found, and once we get, and then, you know, with Laura here, you're hoping to get that straight, and with your work and getting it in with the new, all the budget put together in the new system, that is going to probably have people scratching their heads a little bit again, you know, and Lynn working with everybody too, going, what's this? You know, I'm sure there's going to be a few of those still, and we really appreciate the savings.
Thank you. Yeah, I echo everybody here, at the same time, that day that QuickBooks crashed was a nightmare day for, for this town, but we were able to save it, and we just can't have that happen ever again. We were able to work with QuickBooks to get the data back, it's been since improved to the point of manageable, but with the conversion to Tyler, it's going to be, put it this way, citizens, if you think you had a lot of information before, when we get it into Tyler's system, you're going to have even more. It may not look the same as it was in the past, because the past was a spreadsheet, but we will be putting it all out there in the website for everybody to see, to answer as many questions as you have, and if you're not finding something, please contact the town administration, Chris or Laura, and they can sit down and walk you through it, so.
Hey, Mayor, I have a question, I think someone brought it up, but that $100,000 that did go missing?
That is, it is, it is still in question with receipts from Hafen Associates that are in question between us and Flower Mound and Denton County. It is very complicated and messy because of the situation we had when the underlayment on our side of the road was not correct, and then change orders were done for that, including change orders that were approved here at this council. I was just early, right on the council, when Steve Templer came in, we're still working through the audit of all that. With the budget and the hell is stopped, we got a little bit behind on, but now we've got these things past us, so we can get down and get to the bottom of it and get it figured out.
Okay, thank you.
So it's not a guarantee that it's missing. It may, we may have actually owed it, or if we paid it and we shouldn't have paid it, we know that we will get it back.
Oh, you know you, we will get it back?
If that's found to be the case, yes.
Okay, wonderful.
Yeah, municipalities can't just keep money, but we're still working through, this file is about this thick. This is Wakedon Road that went over, it was approved in the TRIP 2008, I think there's been four mayors, I don't know how many councils throughout that whole project, and then it got to the end, and when they were doing it, they had issues, and it was, you have to pay, I have to pay, they have to pay, we're going to pay. We can't forget that Denton County actually stepped up and paid $283,000 of a change order that we were on the hook for, so. of a change order that we were on the hook for. So, um, we're still working through that. It's not probably a Denton County issue at this point. It's probably a bookkeeping error that we have found questionable there with another engineering charge. We're working through both of those, and we're, we will get these off the books as soon as we know that it's real or not real. Correct? Okay. All right. Chris, anything else? All right. Um, council, discuss, consider, and act on ordinance approving and adopting the budget for fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2025, and ending September 30th, 2026. Do I have a motion?
I move that we accept, let me get my card. I move that we accept the ordinance approving and adopting the budget for the fiscal year beginning on October 1st, 2025, and ending September 30th, 2026.
Do we have a second?
I second.
We have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Willen and a second by councilperson Faverro. Lynn, can you please call the vote?
Dr. Kay?
Aye.
Mr. Dietrich?
Aye.
Ms. Willen?
Aye.
Mr. Gortney?
Aye.
All right, the budget passes. Item 14, discuss, consider, and act on an ordinance, these are, this is now our procedural stuff that we have to do. Discuss, consider, and act on an ordinance fixing and levying municipal ad valorem taxes for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2025, and ending September 30th, 2026. Council, any discussion? If there's no discussion, do we have a motion?
I move that we act on an ordinance fixing and levying municipal ad valorem taxes for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2025, and ending September 30th, 2026.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Willen and a second by councilperson Gortney. Lynn, can you please call a vote?
Mr. Dietrich?
Aye.
Ms. Willen? Mr. Gortney?
Aye.
Dr. Kay?
Aye.
All right, the item passes. Moving on to 15, discuss, consider, and act regarding a vote to ratify the property tax increase reflected on the town's annual budget for the fiscal year 2025, 2026. Council, any discussion?
Well, the wording with that, it's not an increase.
This is just a procedural thing.
This is procedural, and it has to be worded this way.
What you did before was approve the ordinance, establishing that the rate. This now basically says you're taking that rate and putting it into the budget. It's a procedural thing that we have to do.
Yeah, I kind of want to clarify.
And, and the wording, the wording is, we have to follow the wording.
Okay. I kind of want to clarify that for everybody, that it's not an increase or it's the same, the, the rate is.
It's the same as last year.
Yeah, the same as last year, yes.
But this is the way the state of Texas words it. Even if it was a negative, it would be an increase.
Seriously.
Yeah. So, any, any discussion?
I move that we approve, uh, a vote to ratify the property tax increase reflected in the town annual budget for fiscal year 2025, 2026.
We have a second?
A second?
We have a motion by councilperson Gortney, a second by deputy mayor Pro Tim Dietrich. Lynn, can you please call a vote?
Mr. Dietrich?
Aye.
Mr. Gortney?
Aye.
Dr. Kay?
Aye.
Ms. Willen?
Aye.
All right, the budget has, uh, been approved for fiscal year 2025, 2026. Um, we have a few days here, council, we've still got, or citizens, we've got a few days here to get everything clean, a clean in-order sheet, which we will then have posted a hard copy here at the town hall. It will also be on the website. So we, it's just, we're basically, it's the same thing we did last year. We ended up with a spreadsheet, we had to clean it all up and make it look pretty, and we'll be doing that in the next, tomorrow, next two days.
And it'll look much better.
Yes. So, uh, citizens, thank you. Um, all right, moving on to item 16, this is, again, another, uh, we've always done it at this time of year, and that is, is discuss, consider, and act on the fiscal year 2025, 2026 contract with the Double Oak Volunteer Fire Department. Um, council, any, there isn't anything that's changed in the, in the contract document itself. It is the same one that was signed in 2022 by Mayor Donley and by Chief Wizzenhut. So.
And it keeps the same rate of 100,000?
It keeps the same rate at 100,000.
And if we want to approve their tires and their lights, that'll come out?
We'll do that all through separate line items and fund balance, yes.
Okay.
So we currently, it's, uh, still $100,000 from a budget perspective, plus the, uh, workman, workers' compensation and insurance. So it's about, what, 127,000?
Yeah, wait, the city contributes this $100,000 and an extra about $25,000 for some insurance costs.
I move that we approve the fiscal year 25, 2025, 2026 contract with the Double Oak Volunteer Fire Department.
Do we have a second?
I second.
We have a motion by councilperson Gortney and a second by councilperson Faverro. Lynn, can you please call the vote?
Dr. Kay?
Aye.
Ms. Willen?
Aye.
Mr. Dietrich?
Aye.
Mr. Gortney?
Aye.
All right, the item passes. Uh, so we are locked into our Volunteer Fire Department and our EMS services for 2025, 2026. So, um, I wouldn't say go out of your way to use them, citizens, but you know that they're there when you need them, and we have the best of both worlds. So, um, thank you. All right, moving on to item 17, discuss, consider, and act on applications received for reappointment to the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Board of Adjustment. Uh, council, this is the reappointments. This is, um, Chairperson Weaver, um, on P and Z, this is Melhoff, um, Dr. Goodman.
Andrew Weaver, Mr. Melhoff, Dan McCormick.
And their, their terms were up, so that's, so that's what we're doing with this one. And then on the Board of Adjustment, it's, um, sorry, I don't have it right here in front of me.
Marty Robbins.
Marty, Marty Robbins?
Robbins, Mr. Mallinger, and there's one that we have not heard back.
Okay. So we'll, we'll bring them.
What about Dave Johnson? Yeah, Dave Johnson.
Yeah, this, this is just the, the folks whose terms are up that are renewing with us. Existing.
He's not going to be on.
Okay, we're covered? Okay. So again, can we go over the names just again, please?
Yes, Board of Adjustments, it's Marty Robbins, Dirk Mallinger, and we have not heard back from Mr. Rogers. On, um, P and Z, it's Dr. Goodman, Andrew Weaver, Ed Melhoff, and Dan McCormick.
In fact, just got a point of clarification, because I think there's a small mix-up. It was my understanding, and I don't know if Mr. Mallinger is here, that he had requested to be off of the Board of Adjustments and be a, a new representative on P and Z.
Correct.
That's how I understood it.
Right, but he would be done separately.
Right.
He's not done, he, he's done, he has to come, and he, he would be new to P and Z. He's given up his.
But this action is reappointing him to the Board of Adjustments.
Hmm, no.
This action is reappointing him.
So we would still reappoint him?
But he's also on here because he wanted to vacate that, so he's on here as a P and Z member. So that would be up to the council as to whether they wanted to, because we have the openings on BOA.
Correct.
So it would be up to the council whether they wanted to take him off of BOA and put him on P and Z.
But we have him on later for his application for P and Z.
We do. He's on here.
So is, is he officially vacated his BOA spot?
He has not. He said he would vacate if he was put on council.
If he's put on P and Z?
I mean, council, P and Z, yes.
Wish it was that easy.
So, so council, let's go ahead and approve him back on BOA, and then he can officially resign from there, and then he can apply for P and Z. I think that's the cleaner way to do it.
He's in, in to apply for P and Z now, right?
Yes.
Yes.
But he hasn't, because this, this agenda item is all of those who are going to remain on it that want to stay on it. Both, both of them. So I would, I would rather that we don't include him in here.
Okay.
And then we take him into consideration for his P and Z, and then he needs to officially step down from BOA at a point in time in the future.
That's fine. I mean, he was on the agenda as an item, and you can just go over that item, basically.
Okay. Okay. So, let's, let's go over those names one more time, just so the council knows who we're reappointing.
Okay. Um, on the BOA, it would be Marty Robbins, Mr. Mallinger, and we did not get anything back from Sam Rogers.
Okay.
On, uh, P and Z, it's Dr. Goodman, Andrew Weaver, Ed Melhoff, and Dan McCormick.
And the one that we haven't gotten anything back, how long do we wait before we just say that he doesn't want to be on?
Um, I called and left messages, and I also emailed him, which is how we generally talk to each other, and I did give him a date to have everything back by. And I haven't heard anything.
And that date's still out in the future?
The date's gone by.
Oh, it's gone by?
It's gone by.
So we're probably going to be looking at, needing to add somebody.
On BOA?
Yes.
Okay, is, there's another discussion on BOA as far as, I mean, let's, let's talk about this first.
So this is the reappointments.
Okay.
So is there a motion to reappoint?
I move that we, we reappoint all the applications received for the reappointment to the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Board of Adjustments.
Do we have a second?
I second.
Okay, we have a motion by councilperson Gortney and a second by deputy mayor Pro Tim Dietrich. Lynn, can you please call the vote?
Mr. Dietrich?
Aye.
Mr. Gortney?
Aye.
Dr. Kay?
Aye.
Ms. Willen?
Okay.
Aye.
So the reappointments are there. Thank you for those who are wishing to stay with us on, on BOA and P and Z.
Okay. Lynn, can you one more time, who's the one person that must have been P and Z that's come up?
No, BOA. It's BOA. Sam Rogers.
Okay. So now, we're moving on to applications for new, for new members to join either P and Z or BOA. So the item number 18 is discuss, consider, and act on an application from Dave Johnson for the Planning and Zoning Commission. Is Dave Johnson here this evening? Please come on up. Introduce yourself if you can.
And if I may say, um, we do have seven full members, so we do have four alternate spots open for planning and zoning.
All right. So you, so your, your application is for alternate spot?
That's right.
Okay.
Dave Johnson, 3804 Berry Hill Court.
So.
I'm here because I was asked to participate, and I'm volunteering my time if, if needed.
We appreciate you taking the time to do that. Do you have any questions for Dave?
Well, it sounds like he has a lot of experience, like volunteering for the Volunteer Fire Department, and I see here multidisciplinary engineer as well.
Yes.
Tell me a little bit more about, what kind of engineering experience you have?
Double E. That was many years ago. Transferred to network engineering at a request from a professor I once had, who was a VP of Engineering out of the company, my next company, and stuck with that, even though I wasn't schooled in it, I turned out to be pretty good at it, so.
Oh, great.
Are there any other questions? Okay. To council, is there a motion to approve, uh, Dave Johnson for the Planning and Zoning?
I move to approve Dave Johnson into the Planning and Zoning Committee alternate.
Right.
Yeah.
Second?
We have a motion by councilperson Faverro and a second by deputy mayor Pro Tim Dietrich. Lynn, can you please call the vote?
Mr. Gortney?
Aye.
Ms. Willen?
Aye.
Dr. Kay?
Aye.
Mr. Dietrich?
Aye.
All right, Dave, welcome and thank you for volunteering and becoming a part of it.
Absolutely. I'm glad to participate again for the town of Double Oak. It's been too long.
We look forward to your participation, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Um, item number 19, um, is, uh, the, the applicant has withdrawn, uh, so we're going to move on to item 20. Discuss, consider, and act on an application from Karen Huber for Planning and Zoning Commission. Is Karen here this evening?
Karen's withdrawn her application for medical reasons.
Oh, really?
Sorry, she was going to call today.
Okay. Is she okay?
She's calling.
Okay. All right, thank you, Gary.
Pull, pull the application.
Yeah, right. All right, um, item, or, excuse me, yeah, I, agenda item 21, uh, that applicant has also withdrawn their application as of this morning, correct, Lynn?
Correct.
All right. So now we move on to item 22, discuss, consider, and act on an application from Ginger Britton for the Planning and Zoning Commission. Ginger, I think you're here somewhere. Thought I saw you walked in. So come on up.
Ginger Britton, 35 Kings Road. And if I can make a request, please. Originally, I submitted for Planning and Zoning, but I would like to be considered for Board of Adjustments instead, if that's possible, to make that adjustment.
We'd have to pull the application, and you'd have to resubmit.
Okay. Is that a problem? Just pull it and resubmit it, and then we'll just bring, we'll just do it at the next meeting?
The very next meeting, or is there going to be a waiting period again, or can we get it back on the calendar?
No, because we have one other one, too.
Yeah, no, we have, we have a couple we got to do next time. So it'll be the October...
First meeting in October.
First meeting in October.
Yes, please.
So, yeah, if you can just, just work with Lynn, pull it, and then just add it, move it over to BOA.
Sure.
Thank you. Uh, 23, um, item 23, discuss, consider, and act on an application from Dirk Mallinger for Planning and Zoning Commission. So just, so right now, um, Dirk has been reassigned or, or re-upped to the BOA based upon the vote we had on item 17. So now Dirk has requested to put in his application for Planning and Zoning. So this is, I'm going to ask a procedural, so.
For BOA.
Or for BOA. So should Dirk wait until he sees if he's approved for P and Z and have it run through here today, or should he move away from BOA and then come back for P and Z? I'm looking for a recommend.
Move away from BOA and then come back.
Okay. I would prefer we do it that way in the, in the step process. I don't really want to cloud it. Counsel, are you okay with that? So let's move that one to the next meeting as well. Okay? And then, moving on to item 24, discuss, consider, and act on an application from Laura, Laura Mallinger for Board of Adjustments. Um, council questions? Do you want to discuss? Chris, do you want to bring up the?
Yeah, there's, there's been some questions. I mean, Laura is a town employee. Uh, per our ordinance, uh, there is an ordinance for P and Z that she would not be able to be reappointed as a P and Z member. It says that very clearly in, in our ordinance. She served out her term, because when she was appointed at P and Z earlier, she was not a town employee. But our ordinance is very clear, she cannot be reappointed to P and Z, uh, so that's why she can no longer be on P and Z. But for the Board of Adjustments, and it's a whole separate ordinance on the, with a different ordinance number, there is no, uh, no such requirement that an employee cannot serve on, be a, be a B, especially with Laura, the fact that she does not, uh, work anywhere at all with, uh, the permit side of things. She strictly works with budget and finance, so there, there's not a, a conflict of interest, at least from my perspective. The only issue that I have now is that currently with her husband, technically, I guess, right now sits on the Board of Adjustments until next meeting. So my recommendation would be to wait till that gets cleaned up.
Correct.
Before we make any decision with that. But as it, as it relates to her eligibility, she is not eligible to serve on P and Z any longer per our ordinance, but, but can on the Board of Adjustments.
So, council, we're going to move this one to next as well.
But is, is there any rules about two married people being on a BOA?
There, it does not, no, it does not say. There, it does not, no, it does not say that. So, I'll leave that up to you guys.
So, we're going to go ahead and table that one for next meeting, once we have some process play out here. Some of this could have actually been worked out, citizens. We typically, before the state changed the rules on when you post your agenda, we literally had until Friday at four PM, before the meeting, seventy-two hours before the meeting, the agenda had to be posted. As of September first, agendas have to be posted, still seventy-two hours, business days only, no weekends. So, we now have to post our agenda by four PM on Tuesday before the following Monday. We had applications come in, we had people withdrawing, but the agenda was already set. We can't go in and pull these things off. So, this would have been a much cleaner process had we not, we're doing it the way we typically would have done it before, but we cannot do that anymore. So, we're going to have some of these messy things moving forward when you're setting an agenda basically a week, almost a week in advance. So, I want to apologize, really, it's nothing to apologize for. Town administration did their job. It just, we're in a process where applications came in, some came in after the fact that we weren't able to get in on this. So, it's probably just not going to be as easy and as clean anymore to do these things as quickly as we would like moving forward. Would that be a fair statement, Lynn?
Yeah.
All right. So, we're going to move ahead to item twenty-five. Discuss, consider an act on a resolution designating an official newspaper of record for the fiscal year 2025, 2026. Again, this is procedural. The Denton Record Chronicle is the paper that this town has used for how many years? Long time. There are certain requirements that the newspaper, the publication, has to meet. And basically, the easy part of it is, is that their coverage has to include the whole town. Well, the whole town's in Denton County. Denton Record Chronicle covers the whole county, so it works. We looked into other publications, a little more local, but I just didn't feel comfortable to move there. I love Max at the Cross Timbers, but all the other municipalities and cities are aligning themselves with the bigger publications. So, we debated it internally. We decided to stay with Denton Record. So, any questions on that? I mean, this is just all procedural.
No, I think the bigger one is there, and since everybody else, all the other towns, and that's going to be the area that's going to be expected to look into to find the announcements, so.
Are there any drawbacks to having it be the Denton Record Chronicle?
Price. The cost to put out public notices is extremely high.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's in our line item called advertising, that's basically for, and we budget $4,000 a year for, just to do all the public notices and stuff.
So, if someone's requesting a planning and zoning change, let's say somebody wants to do something different on their property, we have to go into the public notice, we've got to file it on with Denton Record Chronicle, and those are not inexpensive items. So.
I know, I know I probably can't speak according to Mr. Gortney. But I was here at the meeting, and you granted me the favor to speak to you in time.
Yeah, come on up.
Can I speak to Tom?
Yeah, you've been with us throughout the whole budget process, so.
Which hasn't, it doesn't matter. I'm Linda from One Ten Tinglewood Lane. And when I was at the first budget workshop, I specifically addressed the advertising issue specifically. And I was given, basically, we'll talk about it later, that it's, there was really no direct answer. And now, I'm finding that we're leaving Cross Timbers Gazette.
No, no, we've never been with them. We were considering them.
Well, we have, we have, I see that we have articles from you in that newspaper.
Yeah, no, this has to do with all of our public notices and all of the official things that the town has to do by the state. We have to post certain things. As far as using Denton, or as far as using Cross Timbers, yeah, for press releases, for press articles, for all of that, and there's not a charge there for those.
Okay.
Yeah, no, there's, Max does all of that.
Okay.
Yeah, no, 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 there's never a fee that Max charges our town. Now, if we were going to advertise something, we would pay for that.
All right.
This has to do with the, we have certain things we have to do, and we have to pay to have it put in a certain spot in the newspaper, and the Denton Record Chronicle is where we do that.
And you think that that's worth the $1,022 increase?
That is, well.
It does sound pretty high.
It's high.
It's $4,000.
But it's high, but we're not sure if the Cross Timbers Gazette technically meets all the requirements that the state requires us to do.
Okay, that's fair.
So, instead of taking a chance, we've opted to remain with Denton Record.
Okay.
And throughout this year, we'll find out if Cross Timbers does qualify.
Okay.
In the future.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I answer your question?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, it's one of those things that we're on the edge, but if we make the wrong choice, and the state comes back and we didn't do something right.
Understood.
Then we're in.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. So, counsel, is there a motion to consider an act on resolution designating the official newspaper of record for fiscal year 2025, 2026, Denton Record Chronicle?
I move to act on a resolution designating Denton Record Chronicle as the official newspaper of record for the fiscal year 2025, 2026.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Councilperson Faverro and a second by Deputy Mayor Protem Dietrich. Lynn, can you please call the vote?
Ms. Wallen?
Aye.
Dr. K?
Aye.
Mr. Gortney?
Aye.
Mr. Dietrich?
Aye.
All right, the item passes. So, Pat, thank you for pulling yourself away from your trip, your business trip to take part.
Do we have one more item?
One more. Twenty-six.
Yeah. Twenty-six.
The change order.
They have a change order.
That's, my town laptop motherboard went out today. I had to completely, from scratch, take an agenda and rebuild. I scripted the meeting because I'm not that good, and I screwed up. So, let me get over to item twenty-six. Counsel, item twenty-six. Discuss, consider an act on a change order number two from Jago Public in the amount of $18,208.60 for the 2024 Asphalt Street Projects. Presentation, Chris.
Can I give a quick update on, A, apologize for this being so late, but as you remember, when they were working on this project, we were just having a lot of delays, and we're just, I basically instructed the contractor, get the work done. They told me that due to the subgrades, much like I had been mentioning before, extra material is going to be required to finish it, because much like on Kings Road, they had to go down much deeper than what they were anticipating. Instead of waiting to go through the change order process, I told them, you've got a clear week to get it done, get it done, and bill me later type of thing, because we had already gone through the discussion with Kings. It took them, quite honestly, a month and a half to get, after the project was completed, to give me the change order. I had a lot of questions on the change order, given the price, and that has taken another month of talking back and forth with them to say, to verify that these are legit charges for this project. But I'm now at the point, I feel comfortable, both me and our town engineer, we've been working directly with the construction company. I'm comfortable with this number. Again, the primary reason is when they went down on Twin Lakes and Lake Trail, they actually had to go a little bit wider than what they were anticipating, and also a little bit longer, and also a little bit deeper. And so, that's why the increase of $18,000, this will be the final, I promise, change order, because the project is done. That once I get counsel approval on this, you'll be, the next council meeting, we'll be doing the final transfer of money to cover the final payment for this bill, not for this bill, but the final bill, and so we can close out this account. But I didn't want to do that until I brought this change order to the council.
Questions, counsel?
Just to clarify, it was, oh, sorry. Go ahead.
Yeah, okay, I was just going to say that they actually did a good job, because the Flower Mound and McMackin, within three months, it cracked several places. And that Kings area is just rock solid, there's no cracks in any of those areas that they worked on. So, I don't know, you know, it's the extra work on there for the unexpected things, you know, that happens sometimes. Especially on Kings, that was just coming apart.
Well, we're going to instruct, future projects, they're going to have to do some core drilling to determine the subsoil.
Yeah.
So, we can get a little better upfront number.
For the proposals.
Yeah, because as soon as they dig in.
It's too late.
Right.
I just wanted to make a note that the original contract was for $435,000, and then with all the change orders, that was about $35,000 difference, and so it ended up at $471,000.
You are correct.
And that's Kings and Lake Trail and Twin Lakes.
Yeah, and a small section of, Gene, you probably remember.
Oakview.
Thank you. A small section of Oakview.
Yeah, okay.
Other questions, counsel? Is there a motion to approve the change order number two from Jago Public in the amount of $18,206.60 for the 2024 Asphalt Streets Project?
I move to act on the, or approve the change order number two in the amount of $18,208.60.
Is there a second?
A second.
We have a motion by Councilperson Faverro and a second by Deputy Mayor Protem Dietrich. Lynn, can you please call the vote?
Ms. Wallen?
Aye.
Dr. K?
Aye.
Mr. Gortney?
Aye.
Mr. Dietrich?
Aye.
All right, the item passes, so thank you, counsel. So, again, Pat, thank you for taking your time away this evening. Thank you, citizens, for taking part here this evening, and those online, and counsel, I appreciate everything you're all doing. Town administration, Laura and Chris, amazing job rebuilding our numbers for our town. It's hard to say that when we started last year where we were at and what we've got to, so appreciate all the efforts there. Lynn was a big part of that as well, and she, while we were doing a lot of that work, she was keeping the town running, so. Very much appreciate everybody. With that said, it is eight thirty-eight. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.